Okay, Crowded House, welcome everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Bring this meeting to order. We'll need a motion to approve the present agenda.
Motion.
All in favor? Any questions on the present agenda? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go. Public, the public, the forum is now open for public who may want to address the board at this time. This public session is on any topic you'd like, not necessarily board-specific, that one will come later. There's a lot of people here not to talk. With anybody on the line now, so? We have 12 attendees virtually, but I don't see any hands up at this point. Okay. Going once, twice? Okay. We have a motion to approve tenure for staff. Be resolved, the Board of Education grant tenure to Cassie Flanagan in the area of elementary education, effective February 3rd, 2024. Any questions on the tenure? Alright, I have a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I would, I should have grabbed you before you. Go ahead. And I normally would do this standing up, but our handheld isn't here tonight. But I just, we always want to take a moment and pause when we have somebody who's receiving tenure. It is a huge deal. It's even a bigger deal this evening because Cassidy is one of our own. We'd like to celebrate Cassidy Flanagan's receiving tenure. As you may or may not know, Cassidy's mom was also my executive assistant when I first started here, and her dad was a longtime teacher here as well. So they're, they're well-known to the Chatham family, and we're just so excited when our graduates come back and work for us. And she's just doing an amazing job. She's, her classroom is just so exciting to be in. So Cassidy, congratulations. Okay, well, we're not going to hear from our student representative.
So I wanted to start with some things that happened recently. First, the Pops concert. I really enjoyed that. Everybody dressed up and we did different movie songs, show songs, and theme songs. So that was pretty exciting. We had like sitcom songs that were also pretty fun. We also had the students from the musical perform. I didn't get to see that, but I heard that it went very well, kind of a little promo before the actual musical. We also had Panther Pride Weekend just this weekend. So there was basketball, volleyball, and bowling. I don't think bowling had a match, but basketball and volleyball, they all had matches for Modified JV and Varsity. We also recognized the seniors at the Panther Pride Weekend, and we recognize the opposing seniors as well, which is something that we do traditionally to like respectful teams. And then, there's not a lot this week, mainly just midterms this week, so we don't actually have school. So it's midterms and regents this week, and the end of the semester is on Friday, so that'll be the end of quarter two.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have superintendent's reports. Hello, everyone. We have a full-packed menu for you under the superintendent's report tonight. For the first item, I'd like to introduce Brian Simon, our Director of Pupil Services, who will in turn introduce our first presentation.
Hello, everyone. So, some of you who were here many years ago, remember when I came to you saying we have influx of special needs students at the high school, that we really wanted to create a program here at the high school. Previously, historically, we had students who were sent to Questar or other private schools, but there was a push to keep them in the community. Like, these are our students, our children, we wanted them in the community. And thanks to you guys, we started that classroom. And we have a report coming from that classroom today. The idea was to keep the kids in the community because they're part of our community. And it has gone very well. They're active in the community, and the community has embraced the children, and we've made some incredible connections with different employment opportunities. Teresa Rossi stepped in a wonderful job. So I'm going to pass it to Teresa. We have Teresa, we have the two teachers assistants in the classroom. We have Addie who's here, one of the students in the classroom and his mother. So we have a little small contingent from the classroom, so I'm just gonna pass it on to someone who can talk much better than I about it.
I'm Aye. Hi, Addie. Great job on the concert the other night.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I, I went to Sal, this is the sixth year of the program, and I went to Sal and I just said, and I've been talking to Lori and Natalie, who are my right and left hands. Without them, I don't know what I would do. They're, they're beyond incredible. And I said to Sal that I would just, I would like to thank the community at, at a board meeting, because they have embraced us. They have been so wonderful to our kids. They know the kids by name in many of these places. When I go into Price Chopper and I don't have them with me, they ask where, where's the rest of you? And I just, Sal said, that would be great. He said, why don't you put together a little presentation? So, here we go, right? So we just wanted to thank our community. So you, Sal, you can switch. One of the biggest goals for us in our room with the kids is to help them transition once they leave my room. What are they going to be doing when they leave us here at Chatham? They have their options. They can go to a co-workday program. There's Robin Solow Academy, but we just want them to be active members of their community. And each weekday, we, we're blessed to have a bus. We go out in the community from 9:30 to 11:30, and we do anything and everything we can, right, Addie?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do. And we've gone to, like I have up here, from the transfer station to the laundromat to Walgreens. I mean, I've taken them, the bus pulls into, you know, the transfer station, and they look at us like, what are you doing here? No, we're just teaching our kids about what a transfer station is. We've stopped, you name it, we've been there. DMV, anywhere that I can expose these kids to any life situation is what we try to do. You can, the first place that we've been there, this is the sixth year, is Chatham Hardware. And I want to thank Wendy and Ernie Lindmark and Frank Genovese. They welcomed us, and I just have to tell you what they do for our kids is, we, the, their load comes in on a Wednesday. And what Wendy does is, there's ACE products that are already numbered, but then there are other products that aren't numbered. And what she does is she goes through and she will take painter's tape, puts painter's tape on the product, and then our kids match the number on the painter's tape to the product if it's not an ACE product. And we've been doing this for six years, and it's taken them a while, but now they, you can see, they, you know, we practiced in the room matching numbers, but now those three boys are independent, right? They, they go in, they get their carts, they find the product, and they know now too, if they don't know where a product is, they will go up to Ernie or Wendy and they say, can you help me? And Addie, you, you're doing a great job too. Some of the kids, obviously my goals are different for each of them. It's like, for Addie, right, at first, it was hard to push cart, stay with the cart. For another one of my kids, she might flop down on the floor, you don't know where you'd find her. But now, now she holds the cart. So it's, it's little things that have made such a difference. And the community comes in and they know the kids, and it's just, it's wonderful. But they have been so welcoming and just amazing with the kids. On the Gant Food Pantry, Annie Skibianski, she, we, we had a little hiatus during COVID, but she called me this year and said, can you please come back? And so three of the boys go to the Gant Food Pantry on Wednesdays, and they have a lot of work for them. You might remember Dean Skimmerhorn, sometimes Patty Wharton is there, they're volunteers there, and they just help the kids, the kids stock the, they take stuff from the freezer, put it into the refrigerator, they fill boxes, they'll actually take the wagon and they will bring food out to people's vehicles for them. So, so while those three boys are at the Gant Food Pantry, Addie and Emily, they come with a couple of us, and we go to Price Chopper. And who's that, Addie? Who's, who are those, who are those men?
Fish man, meat man.
Fish man and meat man, yep. AKA Jason and Joe. We, we, the adults know them as Jason and Joe, but they are fish man and meat man to the kids. And they are incredible. They will bring out a big cart for us to stock the shelves. Every Wednesday, we stock the shelves. Actually, Meat Man has brought the kids and showed them how they process ground beef, but, but, right? Yeah. And what else do you do? What did you do with the boxes? What do you do with the boxes with Meat Man? You go in the back and you push what?
The red button.
Yeah, you push the red button and they watch the boxes get crushed. So they have been incredible to the kids. Jackson's Old Chatham House, thanks to Mrs. Jackson, who happens to be related to, who is that man with you there? Who's that?
Uncle Barry.
He's Uncle Barry to the kids. Yes, he is Uncle Barry. And they, too, we go there and we clean and wipe down all of those menus. And there are a lot of menus, probably, I'd say 50, right, at least 50 to 75 menus. And salt and pepper shakers, the adults kind of do that. We fill those, but we clean the trays for them. And it's amazing to see how the kids have progressed over the years. Maybe we had one child, he couldn't even just squirt the cleaner, because it was just fine motor skills. But now, it's just, the progress is incredible. So thank you to Barry and Leah Jackson. High Falls Restaurant in Filma, Justin Quinones, this is where Sabrina Williams, who's our secretary here, she said, you know, let me call my, my brother-in-law. She said, I think that would be a great place for you to go. I don't know where the pictures disappeared to in my phone, but I did have pictures of them. But every Monday, we go there and we fold pizza boxes, at least, probably about 75 pizza boxes. We put liners in the pizza boxes, and then we do their menus and they're check, they're folding checkbooks. And a couple of the kids sweep the floors every Monday. So he's been wonderful to our kids too. And I'd like to thank the Bank of Green County, the Gant Post Office, Stewart's, Dan's Diner, the Bank of Green County, Betsy Braley has been incredible. She's had the kids in, she's done lessons on deposit slips and so forth. She even enlarged them so the kids could write on them. We love Roxanne at the Gant Post Office. Whenever one of us has something, you know, or we have banking, we're saying, okay, guys, let's stop. And it's to the point now where it's great, like, I will just stand back and they walk in, right? Addie, you do a lot of, yeah, you do, you do banking. Do you like banking?
Yeah.
I'm glad, okay. And the Post Office, Stewart's, we fold boxes for Stewart's in the classroom. So we fold boxes for Stewart's, and then we deliver the boxes. There's Addie at the Recycling Center. We go to a recycling center, and they will just ask the kids, how many bottles do you think you have? What do you think you have? You know, we bring in like bags of bottles, and this, one child will say, oh yeah, we've got 20 bottles? No, maybe we've got to work on estimation, but no. And then Dan's Diner, we just started just going in there to see what that was like. And we're going to be visiting that once, just once a week to go in. So. We also have, there are two people who do not get out much. One is a, I would call him a shut-in. He, he does not drive anymore. He lives on his own. And we pass by his home. I do help care for this man, but he does give us money to shop for him. And we stop and we deliver it to him. And the joy that we see in his face when he sees the kids bring stuff to him is, is incredible. And we also shop for Lori's mom, and we do her shopping for her, and we just drop that off as well. And the kids, you can see, there's Addie again. The kids are doing a great job. They scan, they will actually put in a card, they will, it, they've come a long way. And that's it, as far as what we do in the community. So I just thought that I needed to thank them for just welcoming us and the kids, just welcoming our kids. And thank you for your support, Jim.
Sounds like maybe we should be thanking you in return.
Yeah, that's really impressive.
What do you want to say? Oh, he calls, he calls the elderly gentleman, that's his grandpa. He calls him, it's grandpa to him, but, thank you.
I just want to say that you, you do a wonderful, wonderful job with your, you and your cohorts do a wonderful job. And with your star that you brought tonight, I see him, and he stars in the high school choir every time I go to a concert.
Yeah.
He does very well. He's a great singer, and, and he enjoys it. And that's part of the confidence that you were, you are, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
If you're not currently speaking, if you would mute your microphone, that would be helpful too. Okay, so part two, I would like to introduce Dr. Gladys Cruz, and I think, I think I saw Jim, Dr. Neumeyer also joined her. Dr. Cruz is our Questar III District Superintendent, and Jim, Deputy Superintendent, who has the right title, Associate Superintendent? I think, Jim, you may have been here years ago to highlight the Tech Valley Program. So at one point, Jim was the principal at Tech Valley, before going to become the Superintendent at Duane'sburg, and now with Questar. So, welcome, and we're here to give you an update. Let me bring up their presentation on Questar Services, and there was a couple of questions from the board that they actually have a slide or two to, to address.
Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to join you. It's always great to get out to the boards and just share what we're doing. And today, we have a student with us, so that, that's always the highlight of our presentation. So, you can move it. So I'm going to start with the Arwada in the region. So in 2013, 14, we had close to 35,000 students in our region, for instance, Columbia and Green Counties. And it is down to, to less than 30,000 in 2223. Now, this denominator is not only in our region, it's in our state, in most parts in our state and in our country. So it's, there's a declining enrollment, and it's due to many different reasons. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because that, that doesn't have an impact on how the administrative budget and the capital budgets are allocated to districts. The next slide is our CTE enrollment. And what we have seen over the years is that it continues to increase. So in 2013, 14, we had less than 700 students, we're close to over 800 students right now. Next slide, our Special Education Enrollment. We have seen this as well increase over time. We ended last year with over 300 students in our Special Education Programs across the three counties. The next slide is our Career and Technical Education Programs, and I'm going to turn it over to Jim.
I'm assuming that the red means that it's on, so I'll just, I'll just talk as if it is. So I oversee the academic programs at Questar, and one of those programs is our Career and Technical Education Program. So you send students to Donald Klein Technical School. We have a lot of great CTE programs, so a lot of traditional things that you might remember from when you or your children were in school, programs like Construction Technologies or Cosmetology. But we also have newer programs like Aviation that represent kind of the next wave of CTE programs that are being developed. We have a student with us from, I think we have a student with us from our Career and Technical Education Program, is Cameron here? So Cameron's from our Criminal Justice Program. And Cameron, can you just talk a little bit about your program and maybe some of the things you learned and some of the things you liked?
Good evening. My name's Cameron Myers, and as he stated, I am in the Criminal Justice Program. We learn, so, so far, just in the first four months that I have been there, we've learned a little about the penal law. We've run through vehicle and traffic law. We have learned how to properly process a crime scene and bag evidence. And we have also learned proper handcuffing techniques, so we don't injure anybody in the process and don't cause them any harm. Criminal Justice, there's also many field trip opportunities. The seniors went on a field trip to the New York State Police Academy just before Christmas break, and they really enjoyed it. The juniors are going on a courthouse visit here in the next couple months, around like March. So we'll go in, we'll see what happens, we'll probably sit through a little bit of a case, and we'll get that experience in the law enforcement and criminal justice field in the real world. That's about it.
Why did you choose to go to CTE?
So, my dad is a sergeant at Chatham PD, and I've always looked up to him. He's always been my role model. He's here with us today, actually, right over there. And with his, with his influence on my life, since a little boy, I've always looked up to him. So I've always been interested in the law enforcement field. And with that influence, that's what drove me to choose Criminal Justice and choose to go, go to Questar to study Criminal Justice.
And your favorite thing so far?
Um, I like when our teachers absence, we get to watch crime movies.
Not what I was looking for.
Hold on one second, Cameron, Cameron?
Thank you, Cameron.
What do you hope to do? Do you know what level you want to be? Local? You want to be sheriff or state? Come on, we're good, Dad, nice. Good job, Dad. I just wanted to interject for one second. And for those of you who may not know the difference between Klein and Gibson and the location.
Yeah, sure. So we have one center that's in Troy-Rentzler area, and we have one that's in Hudson. Both of those centers, some, some of the programs are duplicates, but some of the programs are unique. So we have, for instance, a gaming and multimedia program at the Gibson Center. The aviation is unique to the Hudson Center. We also have the Maryland Noonan School, which hosts a couple of our other programs, which your students might attend. So we have a heavy equipment program at Maryland Noonan, and we also have an agriculture science program there. So those are, those are, the agriculture program is a newer program, and definitely something that we're, we're trying to build up. We have lots of new things that are always being developed. One of the nice things about being in CTE is that you get to create new programs based on economic needs and student interest. And so we already have, next year, we know that at Klein, we're going to be offering a fire, firefighting course. So that'll be for juniors, and then those juniors can stay on in senior year and take an EMT course. So we're always trying to innovate new things based on what the needs are in communities. We also have a career studies program at our, at both of our bigger centers. These career studies programs are, offer students some career experience, but it's a little bit more individualized at a little bit of a different pace, and they don't have to do the same kinds of assessments that students do in CTE programs. So, so one thing that Cameron might not even know yet is how rigorous these CTE programs are. So not only are students in their junior years, they're getting integrated math and science, senior year, they're getting an English credit. Also, these students are all going to have to take technical assessments. And it's, it's quite hard to do well in these courses, and we're really proud of how well our students do. We have a really high rate of technical endorsements, really high rate of pass rates on our technical assessments. And we're just really pleased also this year with record numbers at both facilities of students who are eligible to be in the National Technical Honor Society, which requires a 90 or above. And so it definitely takes work to do that. If you could go to the next slide, yeah. So I always forget the Youth Apprenticeship Program. It's another thing that students in CTE programs can also apply to be in. So in addition to all the work they do in classrooms, students also do work-based learning actually on the job site. And students can apply to be youth apprentices at different businesses around the area and actually earn money while they're apprenticing. Some of these students are even hired by the places where they do their apprenticeships. And we have students right now who are employed by the place where they did their apprenticeship, and they're finishing up their CTE programs at the same time. So they've already started their futures. We have a couple of innovative high schools. We have STEM High School on the Hudson Valley Campus. So STEM High School is a really unique school in that it's located on the Hudson Valley Campus, and that students take classes both in the building that, that Hudson Valley has given us for this high school, and they take classes on the college campus. So they, they have kind of the best of both worlds. They're earning their regents diplomas and their associate's degrees at the same time. Students pick a STEM-related major and pursue that major over the course of time at the school. Some students in some P-Tech, more challenging coursework, may take five years to get the associate's degree, and so they'll stay on to get the associate's degree right after they finish their regents requirements. But while they're there, even in high school, they get to take advantage of all the things on campus, like the campus library, the tutorial center, writing services, everything that a college student would have, these students have access to. It's a really exciting school. So we're in our third year at STEM High School. Next year, it'll have all four grades, ninth through 12th grade, and we'll be graduating our first students. You can go ahead.
Oh, do we have a? I think we have a student from the program with you tonight.
I don't have you on it. Would you like to come up here and talk about your experience?
And while she's getting situated, this is the first year through the board's support that we were able to send a student to this program. You know, transportation in some of the programs, geographically located, have been a little challenging this year through hard work of our school counselors and Josh and our Transportation Department. We've been able to figure out how to do this.
Hi, my name is Josephine Moore. As you said before, STEM High is located on the HBC campus. I'm really enjoying the project-based learning format, and all my teachers are very supportive in, in their fields, and they encourage me to find more than just the right answer. The PLBs or the project-based learning with all the classes, they combine their, and collaborate together. And I've just started my first college class, and I'm excited to start more college classes. Yeah.
What is your favorite thing so far?
I like how we can basically just go around campus, because we are college students.
And how is it, how has it been interacting students from other schools of service?
It's been quite easy, because they're all looking for the same things that I am. We all have the same interests, because we're going to a STEM school, and we're all like wanting to learn.
And so you think you made the right choice?
I do. I'm very happy with the choices. Thank you.
We have one more innovative high school, that's on the next slide. So as Sal said, this is a school that I ran for five years. So it's pretty close to my heart, Tech Valley High School, which is on the SUNY Poly or CNSE or New York Creates Campus. Um, so it's pretty close to my heart, Tech Valley High School, which is on the SUNY Poly or CNSE or, uh, New York Creates Campus. Whatever organization is currently leaving that campus. Um, so Tech Valley High School is quite mature. Um, it's been around since two thousand and seven. At this point, it's been doing project-based learning so long that people, uh. People have long come to Tech Valley High School to learn about project-based learning. But now it's, uh, kind of an expert in the field, as are its teachers. Um, it's got a really, um, uh, kind of long-serving teaching staff. Um, it serves a hundred and fifty students. Um, right now it has thirty-six students with disabilities, um, a hundred percent graduation rate. Um, unlike, uh, Hudson Valley's STEM High School, um, Tech Valley High School, um, doesn't have the associate's degree. Uh, baked into its program, although students can still earn an associate's degree at Tech Valley High. Um, the average number of credits that students earn is about twenty-five. Um, one really special thing about Tech Valley is that it has a pretty robust career exploration program. Where even freshman year, students pick careers of their, uh, of their interest and do different activities related to that career. And it kind of culminates in senior year when they actually do two-week-long internships with businesses. Um, so really special high schools, um, and we're glad that our students have the ability to choose these two great options. To the next slide, the final thing that I'll talk about is our new visions program. So, um, new visions is a really, uh, great series of programs. So these are one-year programs, um, that are taken during a student's senior year. You have four students right now in different new visions programs, um, but they're really all over the place. So we have, um, I was talking to, uh, a bunch of families the other night. And they were mentioning different places where they worked. And, um, we had, uh, programs that were located near all of them at different campuses. So we have our pathways and education program, which, um, is, is really interesting. About forty out of forty-one students who've been in that program so far have gone on to be education majors. Um, last year was the first year that students started earning, uh, TA cer- certification to become teaching assistants. While they were in the program, we also have a visual and performing arts center or, uh, arts program at the Troy Arts Center. Um, so if you have students who are interested in drama or music or visual arts, um, it's a really creative and fun environment for them. Um, we also have a STEM program at RPI. Um, that program allows students to take, uh, physics, engineering classes on campus. We have a medical program that meets at Samaritan Hospital. Um, we have a scientific research and world health program. We have a new business finance and accounting program at Columbia Green Community College. So that really started because of a need for, um, people in the accounting field. Um, and that has a really great teacher. I'm very sorry, has a great teacher in it. And that program is doing, uh, really, really well. And, um, we're excited about it, it growing in the future. And we also have, uh, an epic program, which is an emergency preparedness, informatics, cyber and homeland security program. At the E-Tech Building, um, on the, the SUNY East Campus. So just, uh, really great opportunities for, um, senior honors level students.
You may recognize Anna in the upper right-hand corner there. And, uh, what Jim was referring to is, um, our, Mr. Lewis has moved on to the business finance and accounting class at, uh, Columbia Green. And you're welcome.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, the next slide. You know, one of the things that we've been talking a, a lot about and you have probably been hearing a lot about is artificial intelligence. And it's the next transformation that we will definitely see impact our lives and our, uh, school systems. Um, next slide. So we work in our BOCs through subcommittees of superintendents. The academic subcommittee works with, uh, Jim and with Shawna, our assistant superintendent of exceptional and early learning. To create additional programs or get rid of programs. Um, the rate, the, the new programs are created based on need as, um, Jim was explaining. And the workforce, uh, development needs as well. Next. So what programs does, uh, Chatham purchase? You want to go to the next one? These are, this is a, a, a listing of all the programs that you, that the district participates in. Last year, yeah, the district purchased two-point-six million dollars of services. Five-hundred-and-nineteen-two-sixty-two were special education services. The BOCs aidable services were approximately two million with a net cost of one-point-two. Or fifty-seven-point-eight percent. Uh, Chatham gets back an average of forty-two-point-two cents on every dollar spent on BOCs aidable services. The aid racial is forty-nine-point-ten, but there are some exclusions in those rates. The next slide are some additional programs and services that are available. We have over three-hundred programs and, uh, services across our region. Next, uh, next one. This is our administrative budget and, um. Uh, this, uh, last two years, um, you see that we have kept those administrative budgets very tight. We do have, uh, statewide services and interest that we receive and we deduct that from the total. Um, the estimated cost is at the bottom after, uh, state aid, BOCs aid and refund. Uh, the next slide, this is something that you asked about. Um, you asked about, uh, section two mergers and that's happening a lot. Um, there were eighty-one, uh, teams that merged last fall. Twenty-five involved our schools. Um, uh, seventy-one merged this winter, involving twenty-eight of our schools. One was new, Columbia, East Greenbush, Troy and CBA for modified varsity voice swimming, just to give you an example. Uh, sixteen merged football teams involving thirty-one districts, including six new merged teams last fall. So we're seeing this more and more. Um, and this is happening because, um, the, the, the districts don't have enough, uh, sometimes enough players. And that is all I have for you. And, uh, I do have one sheet that I shared and this is a snapshot. It has a lot of the information that we shared tonight. Um, your Bo- BOCs aid racial, uh, on the back, you have the pro- number of students attending the different programs. And the purchase services and all, all of that information. So you have it handy. I do want to thank, uh, Melanie Spock for being with us tonight. She was, uh, she's a known to this board and she is on our board. So thank you for joining us. Thank you.
Dr. Cruz, I have a question about the, a further question about the mergers. Um, so. I mean, obviously that we've, we've seen the student enrollment, there seems to be a considerable drop, uh, in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, I mean, I could speculate that maybe we're looking at a COVID component on that. But I, I, I don't know i- i- what the data would suggest. So, uh, from the BOCs, we're talking about statewide numbers, lower enrollments. Uh, a lot of these mergers are new. Uh, they seem relatively sudden. I don't know how much groundwork is going into building them. Um, but, but I've known you a really long time. And I, I kind of know that, that your mind, you're, you're big picture. What are the other BOCs saying? What are we looking at? For roadmap going forward for small school districts like, like this one or others? Um, where we can get a predictive data set so that we are providing for our students with a ten-year vision. This board here talked about this last year, about developing a vision and goals that would speak to two or three, but also five, seven and ten years out. These changes are so fast, they're almost anomaly numbers. But, um, but they are either anomalies or, or they're predicted. And the state's going to respond in a budget accordingly. Um, we hope. Can you give any insights? I mean, I hate to ask you to speculate. I know that that's not your style, but, um. Or, or maybe a pathway that BOCs might work across the state together to try and get an understanding of what's happening in New York State. Around students' education and the offerings that we're, we're preparing to do.
So one thing that I can tell you that I have been watching carefully, um, then very closely. Is the number of students that are being homeschooled. So, um, when we started that service years ago, there was a handful of, literally a handful of families across the BOCs. And today, there are, I think it's around fourteen-hundred students from our region that are being homeschooled. That's a significant number. It's lo- it's a larger number of students than a lot of our, um, the enrollment of a lot of our districts. So it's, it's, that is happening. Um, in terms of, uh, you know, I know that I, I continue to see, you know, issues with the, with the sports teams. Um, you probably saw, um, Hudson, um, have some, some challenges. Past couple of years in terms of their numbers. So it, 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 there's, because of the lower enrollments. I think there's also lower interest in terms of different, different, um, sports. And so districts are having to come together. New Lebanon and, and Berlin, they share some sports. You know, so it's, I, you know, I've seen it like cascade. And, um, I, you know, that question that you asked is a good question and I'm going to ask my, yes, colleagues. To see what's going on in the state. So I will ask. Any other questions or comments?
Being that, uh, we're in a difficult location for, um, for transportation to many of these programs. You know, I just, I have to ask slash advocate for, um, CTE enrichment options that are remote format. Or, um. In some way, um, you know, partially remote. Uh, a- a- anything with less transportation pressure. It's really difficult for a lot of these, um, really great opportunities for our student body to take advantage of.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll say that our distance options have really grown over the last few years. Um, so we have a lot of programming through distance learning. CTE is one of those areas that requires a lot of hands-on. Um, and so that makes it really challenging to do that through distance learning. Um, but yeah, it's a, it's a really great thought and I will consider how we can do more, um, with CTE. To accommodate folks who come from such a far distance.
Ju- just, just as a follow-up on, on what you just said, I think that, um, the entire world has looked at the way we do our work. And, um, many, many, many fields where they said this can't possibly done remote are now done entirely remote or, or. Partially remote distributed and, um, whatever, whatever, um, whatever assumptions we made going into COVID. Um, it'd be great if that could be reassessed in terms of what's actually possible.
Yeah, you're certainly right about that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I just want to thank both of you. Um, you know, the superintendents, uh, in any region are, um. Grateful for their district superintendents. They bring us together. They provide professional development. Um, I don't know if we would have survived the pandemic without the camaraderie that was created through the Questar region. So my, my personal thanks to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Typically, if you've come for one of the programs, you're, you're more than welcome to stay for any portion of the meeting. But also we understand that you're, you have your evening, so don't feel obligated that if you, uh, have already, um. So that's basically Cassidy, you can run. Uh, and, and our students as well, because we know you have, uh, although it's an abbreviated schedule for exams this week, um, don't feel obligated to stay. And we're going to keep moving on. Next, but certainly not any less important, we're going to invite, um, our architects and our construction managers. While they're getting situated, to your far right, Ed Copeland from Colliers. Our construction management in the middle, Matt Monahan, one of the principals at SEI Designs, our architectural firm. And Will Calhoun, also one of our lead architects on this project. And they're going to, once I bring the powerpoint up, they're going to take you through, um, kind of an exciting update of where we are at this juncture in the capital project.
All right, thanks, Sal. Um, we've been working very hard over the last year. Since the, well, almost year since the project was passed, um, last February. So we thought we'd come and give you guys an update on where we're at with the project. Uh, I want to go to the next slide. So we'll run through the scope of the project. I think everybody's probably pretty familiar with that at this point. But give everybody a, an, a general overview on scope, uh, give you some updates on some of the design work that we've been doing. Uh, for each of the buildings and then get into where we're at schedule-wise. And, uh, talk about what we're doing right now to get ready for putting this project out to bed. So the scope of work here at the high school is pretty extensive. Uh, I'm not going to read through this whole list. I think everybody's pretty familiar, but we still have the same base scope that we're working on and the same alternates. That hasn't changed. So here at the hi- high school, you can see this is just the, the overall floor plan of the building. You can see how much work we're doing. So all the blue areas and yellow, well, all the colored regions are all the renovation work that we're doing to the building. So you can see where, uh, there's some heavy work in classrooms or by the science, art and tech wing. The center classrooms that are landlocked in the building, we're going to be rebuilding those walls, making those rooms safer. Uh, we're doing work to the front of the building, to the lobby, as well as, uh, replacing seating and flooring in the auditorium. To bring that up to a nicer condition. The gymnasium floor, that's going to be replaced. And then the bottom, least, last but not least in this building is the bottom corner where music and choir live. Uh, those rooms are going to get a major update as well. So each of these next, uh, pieces here just are focusing on, in on some of the scope areas in the high school. So one of the much-needed things in a lot of schools is toilet rooms. Not glamorous, but something that needs to get done. So, uh, the, the gang toilets in the building are very old, uh, are not ADA compliant. So we're taking three, uh, toilet room areas in the building and gutting and redoing those, making them ADA compliant. New fixtures, new finishes, uh, so those should be really nice when they're all done. The gymnasium, uh, new flooring and new bleachers, these are just some, uh, possible renders that we've put together for. Uh, you know, how the, how the flooring might get, uh, done differently, different graphics, things of that nature. Technology classroom, so, uh, back corner of the building. The tech room is going to get all-new, uh, wood shop, metal shop. And then what we're doing is we're sliding the art rooms down so that we can put the, uh, computer lab for tech. Right next to the wood shop area. So that's going to have a glass partition between them. So they have a direct connection to each other. And the teacher can be in both places and have those areas right next to each other. Then inquire, these two rooms, uh, getting completely redone. There's, there's risers in those rooms. The risers come out. Uh, flat floors, the practice rooms are going to be facing the corridor now. Which also faces the backstage of the auditorium. So those will have direct access to that. Plus they could double as changing rooms for, uh, during plays. They'll get all-new, uh, ceilings, finishes throughout and storage for instruments, storage for music. Um, and improved acoustics. The art rooms, like I said, those get slid down the wing just a little bit to make room for the tech and, uh, uh. The, uh, technology shop and the computer lab. So these are going to be next to each other, sharing a, uh, a storage space between, which will allow us to move the kiln. Which right now sits in the corner of one of our rooms into its own room in that, uh, storage space between. These rooms, like all the others that we're doing along this wing, get all-new finishes, casework, ceilings, lighting. These rooms, like all the others that we're doing along this wing, get all-new finishes, casework, ceilings, lighting. Science rooms, four science rooms and three prep areas. All-new finishes, all-new casework throughout, ceilings, lighting, uh, just with all the other spaces, we've met with all the user groups, gotten their feedback and incorporated all the things that we could, uh, that they wanted for these spaces. So these will all be brand-new, fresh spaces when we're complete. The entrance to the school, so you'll see with this image and then the next couple of images, uh, where we're bringing the entrance of the building and the lobby uh, up to a more contemporary, uh, fashion instead of the nineteen seventies look that you've got now. We get all-new ceilings and lighting in the lobby as well as refreshed finishes in the space to make it more contemporary. One of the challenges with that space, and you can go to the next slide too, Sal, challenges with these two spaces, um, SHPO, which is the State Historic Preservation Office, uh, reviewed the building and came back and said that the project, the building is a example of modernist architecture. So it didn't mean we had to, uh, completely redo what we did originally during pre-ref. We just had to adjust and modify to make what we're doing slightly more sympathetic to the building. So we're still doing what we're doing before, but bringing in, leaving, leaving some of the brick uh, in place, which they wanted us to, and incorporating a little bit of brick into this entrance canopy piece. Some signage on the back, uh, part of the building for, on the, on the, uh, gymnasium to bring some school pride out there. Uh, so alternate scope. The, there's a couple of things here. Uh, one of them is the, uh, courtyard. So right behind the glass behind this monitor is the courtyard. So we'd be putting in a, a slab, some pavers, bringing some seating out there and then put some doors that lead you out of library to that space so students can use it during the day. Uh, librarian could open up this space and students could go out there while they're, uh, using the library. Another big alternate scope piece is the front parking lot. So in the base scope of the project, we'd be milling and re-topping the parking lot to make, to, to basically do some much-needed improvement to that parking lot. As an alternate, what we're doing here is to improve bus drop-off and student drop-off. So you can see the bird's eye view here where we'd be, uh, buses could drive down through that first loop and then parents could go through the other loop that we provided to drop off students. It would separate that traffic flow and make it safer and easier. Moving on to the middle school, so the big thing here is the lintels on the center portion of the building, old portion of the building. We've done a lot of investigation with Colliers on this to determine, uh, how those lintels are uh, currently installed and to make sure that they weren't structural, which they're not. So the plan here is to remove the lintels. What has to come with it is brick above lintels and windows just to get them out. Then we would put back lintels that look the same, so we're not changing the look of the building and put everything back together. Um, so that's, uh, a number of lintels on the front and back of the building. Uh, scope not to be ignored here too is the outdoor classroom. So we can put a, a pre-manufactured pavilion out there, bring out some lighting and power, and that's just gonna be situated, uh, like, near the main entrance of the building. So what you're seeing here beyond, behind the pavilion would be the main entrance building and then kind of, uh, just to the, just next to this is the field, is the, um, uh, sports field.
And again, that, that right now is alternate scope, the, the pavilion.
Correct, yeah.
If I make sure people were clear on that. And for those of you who've joined us, alternate scope means that it's, depending on how the bids come in, uh, and how the project budget flows over the course of the project, we then can have the ability to add in some of these alternate items. They're not in by default.
MED, so the, the, the mi- the minor part of the scope here, uh, that, um, is part of the, the main referendum is removal of asbestos flooring in the corridors that is underneath tile right now that is failing. So that's a, that's a, gonna be a much-needed fix there. Uh, some exterior repairs to the building, so some, uh, minor stucco repairs, brick repairs, things like that. So you can see here in some of those photos, the tile floor cracking quite a bit. Some, uh, some minor cracking around the stucco areas of the building, so we'll try to, uh, improve some of that. And then the major scope here obviously is the adding the air conditioning to the building. So it's gonna be whole building. This is obviously the major scope here. Uh, we're currently kind of working with Colliers to figure out how we're gonna phase that for construction. But, um, uh, that'll be the major improvement at this building. Bus garage, uh, two things happening here, so the interior office spaces that you see in blue on the plan are sort of a much-needed improvement, uh, for them. So we'd be, uh, giving them upgraded office space, new, in, new finishes. Uh, giving them a, uh, clearing out the space on the left a little bit to give them a bigger space to have their training sessions and then giving them proper handicap accessible toilet rooms as well as the red band you see around the plan to replace the balance of metal siding around the building that we didn't get to in the last project to, uh, because there's a lot of rusting and damage to that siding, so we'd be replacing the rest of that. So, schedule-wise right now.
Well, can I just interject quickly before we get into the schedule? I just wanted to say that in February of twenty-three, you pass your referendum. And part of the planning was doing a third-party review, which was to get us kind of to the point where we could go out to bid about this time of year. Right after your referendum, SED canceled the third-party reviews. And, uh, some members of the district said they this kind of messes us up and we, we, uh, had an email go out to SED. And they, you know, basically saying that we planned a project based on a program that you had. You canceled it, our vote just passed. Well, they agreed to expedite our review, which they, they did do, and I have to say that's unprecedented in the state and, uh, it, it was a great idea and, uh, you should be commended and said.
You, you've heard me speak publicly about the, like, if you would have had me bet large sums of money that the email that Matt and Chris constructed would have any, uh, wouldn't fall on deaf ears at, at the education department, I would have lost big, big time. Because it's like Mike betting on the bills, but anyway, um, the, uh, I, I just wanted to let the board know that I have a draft on my desk of a, of a really nice letter, um, thanking everyone at Sage Education Department because it is that impressive of a move on their part, so.
And we have approval.
Yes, so. Yeah, well, that's terrific, Sal. I think that reference might be too soon for Mike.
No, you kind of stole my thunder there. So, uh, it's, the big news is we're approved by SED, so, uh, that's, that's a big thing. So on the seventeenth, we got our approval, which means we can go out to bid. And that means what we're doing right now, we're working with Colliers to get this ready. So we're currently looking at a mid-February bid dates to put it out on the street for bid and then get bids back in March and so that we can start putting contracts together and think about construction in the summer.
Since we're a little backpacked, backpacking anyway, um, if you recall, they said that if we had submitted it by December first, we'd have it back by January fifteenth to the account for Martin Luther King Day. That target is not too far off. But what I wanted to say is that, um, wha- what you should also know is, um, the reason why you hire quality architects and construction managers is that that was not necessarily a, a breeze of a process. I wanna think that I saw at least three or four, um, requests for resubmittals of information in engineering. And the turnaround time from SEI and Colliers was a day or two, and, um, that's why we stayed on schedule. So it's credit to, um, SED for helping us out, but our, our architectural firm stepped up big time as well. That's it. I feel bad I brought, um, Bob here.
Go ahead. Uh, just in terms of the, the last component of that, the construction, April two thousand twenty-four to August two thousand twenty-five, spanning two summers. Sounds so simple in those words, but we just saw there's a lot of stuff going on in that chunk of time, so, um, I'm just thinking in terms of our community, our, our, our public, our parents, our students, our staff, um, it would be great for us to work together, you know, as a board, as a construction team to figure out like best ways to kind of communicate and manage expectations, because there's gonna be a lot of activity and, you know, we we wanna make sure that, that our community is, is comfortable and, you know, they're, there is, um, as, as aware as they can be as to what's going on, so just to reiterate that.
Well, I know, um, we had a, uh, we all met at the SEI offices a couple of weeks ago for a complete page turn of the, uh, construction documents. And Chris, I, you know, you were there, but, um, you can't, I can't express enough how much detail there is in terms of all the HVAC, all the ductwork, all the, um, plumbing and disruption there's gonna be from floor to ceiling. And so you're absolutely right, Chris. We, we, I know I've seen some preliminary phasing documents. Um, there are a lot of parts of this project that are gonna have to be half-done the first summer, half-done the second summer, buttoning up in between, lot of, lot of, um, potential temporary offices relocated, um, during the summer and a lot of logistical planning that we're gonna get started on in very short order. Do you wanna talk a little bit about, um, uh, bidding documents on the street? And, and, and when we would think that we would, um, potentially view and award contracts?
Yeah, so, uh, we're looking to put it out on the street to interested contractors mid-February. So that's when we would literally put it out. We, we'd advertise, start calling contractors, uh, drumming up some interests. Part, partway through, we do a, we do a pre-bid walkthrough, get contractors through to view the project. And then we'd look at sort of probably mid to late March to, oh, to open up the bids. If all goes well and bids come in favorable, we'll, uh, hopefully award base scope and some alternate work. And that, that portion of the work, uh, once we open up bids, well, us and Colliers will have to, uh, vet those bids. We'll have to talk to the contractors, make sure they're comfortable with their numbers, comfortable with the scope of the project. That takes a couple of weeks for us to do. Once we've done our due diligence there, then, uh, then we can, uh, start awarding those contracts. So say probably toward the end of March, beginning of April, we can start writing contracts to, uh, the winning bidders.
And, and what happens in sort of the next three weeks is phasing, really locking down the phasing schedule on, on the, on the work and also looking at this, at the individual piece of the scope, uh, components. Because there are some ways that we can speed some things up with the community purchase agreements and, and, you know, things like that. And because cer- certain items, we're gonna open bids in March. And, you know, if you got a sixteen-week lead time, there's not much chance for summer twenty twenty-four. So we can look at some creative ways to try to, you know, tighten up some of the timelines and make this all piece together the way it needs to dovetail to get us through and out the end of summer. That's what happens between now. That's why, you know, that's why we're not just dropping it out on the street right now. We still.
Send out these bid, when you send out these bids to Johnny Jones, um, to McAdam, you have to, you're, you are telling them when that has to be done, started and finished. That was my question. Thank you. Yes, you're right.
So that's, that's what, that's the component of work that's happening right now.
I wanted to just add one more thing, uh, which is like a, a, a side note relating to the additional scope. Sal, you spoke to this about, um, some of the things that we have in the project, uh, that are not part of the base work. But if, if pricing comes back favorably, that we can add in those additional scope items. Just to, you know, stress that, you know, these are things that the district has identified as, um, you know, important items uh, to, to the school district and, you know, I just wanna say if, if it doesn't work out and we don't get those this round, you know, we should, as a board, consider, you know, keeping them on the burner and, you know, maybe at some point in the future, you know, just, just keeping them forefront, so we don't, don't forget. And I, I, I want, I for one, think that the turnaround is such a a great idea and would, would benefit, you know, the, the way in which we interact with the high school and how everyone comes to the high school. It, you know, I'm just hopeful that that works out, but it's really great, great design.
I don't wanna get too far in a rabbit hole, and this is way out of my area of expertise, but just to kind of illustrate some conversations that have been taking place that help us reach or realize that goal, uh, in terms of cost savings, um. One of the, and, and I guess it would fall a little bit in the area of value engineering. Uh, for instance, we have a, a backup generator here at the high school that we knew. Um, it was undersized for this building and part of the base scope, we're replacing it so that we can, um, provide backup power for the entire high school in the future. Well, uh, our electrical engineers, um, have designed, um, the systems over at the middle school such that we can move that generator, which has probably half of its useful life still available to it over to the middle school so that we can, um, provide, uh, generated power to some of the key systems at the middle school. Because what was determined during engineering and design is that one of the alternatives, alternatives that, alternatives that we looked at was a full-building generator for the middle school, but it is so cost prohibitive, uh, in terms of not only finance, but location um, and, uh, service coming into the building, that that was something that we could utilize from here. The other thing that they did, which I was very impressed with, is we, the way the HVAC is gonna be designed at the elementary school, which turned out to be, I don't know whose idea it was to put air dishing in the elementary school, but wow, has that turned into be a complicated project using various methodologies to provide both, uh, heat and cooling to that building. But one of the, um, areas, um, in, I believe, the eighty-eight wing, where we're gonna be able to use ductwork, uh, we're gonna need a rooftop unit. Well, uh, because of the redesign at the high school, which we have brand-new rooftop units, one of which is no longer really suitable, of suitable size, that's gonna be moved to the elementary school. So, you know, we're, we're trying to save that kind of cost. And we're also, through the expertise of the professionals we have working for us, the, the roof is another example. Depending on what, how we end up deciding to, um, engineer the roof, um, there might be some cost savings there. So, you know, we, we still are very hopeful that some of the alternatives, um, that have a little bit more of an appeal to them, like the, uh, classroom outside the library and the, and the pavilion and, um, some of those, uh, parking lot ideas, um, we're hopeful, right? And a lot of, a lot will depend on the bidding, um, landscape and, um, we're, we are, as it's been told to me, we're not the earliest school districts on the street, but we're really in a good place. We're not gonna be towards the end of the bidding cycle where we're gonna get the people who are really going to put a premium on, on the work. So we'll keep, and if the economy stays the way it is, we'll be hopeful.
And I'd like to add one thing, and that is that even if when we open bids in March, if we don't have the budget to award all of the alternates that you want, what hap- we wanna hold a contingency, uh, that's, that's pretty sizable. And as we move through the project, if we're not spending that contingency, that allows us to then buy some of those alternates later as we, as we get through the project. So, you know, all hope isn't lost once bid day hits and we don't get them all, because we, we bought some pretty big ones in the past further down the road, kind of after that first summer, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Anybody last call?
We got some pretty good notice on that one. We, you know, we really know ahead when we have that left and we can do the alternates. We, yeah, in the past. Let's hope this time, right?
Thank you, gentlemen. We really appreciate your time. We'll figure out when the next appropriate juncture to update the board, um, will be. Okay, moving along with this extensive superintendent's report this evening. Next, I asked Mr. Charlie just to do a brief update. I know we've sent an email to you, but the governor has issued her executive budget. And Mike's going to give us a brief update, because unlike in past years, some of her proposals may ultimately have, could have a dramatic impact. We're not panicking just yet, but Mike's got more for you.
Yes, I did want to just briefly discuss the executive proposal. Remember, Governor Hokel came out with a proposal she does every year, and then the legislators and the executive meet, and then usually by April first, they have a final budget. So this is just preliminary. Typically, I wouldn't say anything because we, you know, we have a February third finance meeting and then the next budget, the next board meeting, I'll go through all the numbers and I'll have all the backup. So I'm doing some of this on preliminary information. But it's, since there is a major shift in what she's recommending, I wanted to bring it up. And I've never seen it. It's my nineteenth budget, and they said for decades, this has never happened. So what the governor is recommending is getting, eliminating the safe harmless aid. So what that means, to hold harmless or safe harmless provision, and it impacts almost every district in our county and roughly forty-five percent of the districts in the state. So significant number of districts. What safe harmless means is for our operating aid, which we receive five point two million right now, or five point three million, you'd always receive the same amount as the previous year. So if you run the foundation aid formula, there's a million numbers in that. And if enrollment drops in, for Chatham, we would actually get less money year after year if they ran the formula. So what they say is we're going to hold all the districts safe harmless and give you the, that's the baseline. Then typically, at the end, we get one to two to three percent increase. So fifty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which helps, you know, offset inflation and help insurance costs and all that. That's what's been happening for forever, pretty much. So by getting rid of that, what does that mean? For our districts, we would lose about nine hundred and four thousand dollars next year, which is one of the biggest decreases I've ever seen. And on top of that, if you actually run the formula, we would lose one point eight million dollars. So she's saying, well, we're going to take fifty percent minimum of that amount of every district, and some are getting even more taken out, depending on your wealth. So, and as I stated, it's not just in Chatham. So for example, in our county, Teconic would lose thirty-three percent. Germantown, twenty-two percent, Chatham seventeen percent, Cottenade, Hudson sixteen, and New Lebanon ten percent.
And then go to Ichabod.
And Ichabod's the only one that would get a slight increase of one percent. Now, Ichabod is the poorest district actually in our county. And I, I haven't looked at all their numbers, so their enrollment might have not have decreased as much. So that would be another reason. But they are, all these other, we're all above average wealth, all the rest. So like I said, though, it's also forty-five percent of the districts in the state, so it's a significant amount. I was looking at some of this. I think there was a hundred and twenty districts are going to lose ten percent or more. So I've been reading the articles across the state. We had a call from Scott Vendit from April Park. I think he's the assemblyman for the hundred, I think, hundred and seventh district. He talked with us about the impacts, and he talked about the districts he represents. And then DeeDee Barrett, I saw a note today that she's sending in to the governor. So the legislators obviously are, are noticed the impact and there is word out on, you know, to, to at least, you know, put that provision back or don't take such a drastic cut. Nine hundred thousand dollars is unbelievable for a non-recessionary year. One thing that, you know, the last thing I'm going to say is, you know, that's why the last two state control audits, you know, they said, give your savings back, don't have savings. Well, that's why we have savings. So we can get through this. I'm not going to panic, just like in COVID. We did panic and cut everything out. We waited to see what happens. We got through that. I'm going to recommend the same approach. We're going to use some of our reserves. We're going to use some of that until we see final numbers. If this does come in ultimately into effect over the next few years, then we're going to have to look at everything in our district and have to rebalance everything. But like I said, we're not going to panic right now. We do have savings. We have contingencies. That's why we built those. And we're going to see, and I'm hoping there's enough fight since half the districts in the state are impacted that they're going to restore a big portion of this, or if not all of that. That's what I have on that for now. We'll talk on the next meeting when I get all the backup and all the numbers.
Questions for Mike?
Mike, what was proposed? That was for this year full cut or is this a phased, a phased?
So they would cut, the proposal is, and they'd look at different ratios. I gotta look at some of the backup, but they said at least fifty percent. So one point eight million, it would be a full cut. So they're recommending fifty percent, nine hundred thousand for us. So obviously, if that went away, we'd be talking about over time, one point eight million dollars, which would be extremely detrimental to our district. So like I said, the good thing is fifty percent of districts are dealing with some portion of this. So there's going to be a lot of fight for this because it's not just us in like ten districts that I'd be super concerned because they might not care, but you know, you know, there's voters, there's, there's politics involved. So we're going to see where that goes.
I'm wondering if there's something that we as a board can do to, you know, just.
I sent Sal an email.
Yeah, okay.
I can't tell you how many times in the last twenty years this has been threatened. And it always seems just before you get to pass our budget, something happens, comes in and we're safe.
But they've never actually said, started with taking this away. This is the first time. This is the first time ever they actually are recommending to take it away. This whole time was, yep. So that's why I was, obviously, when I looked at the numbers last week, and it's not a non-recessionary year, so I was, I thought maybe I need reading glasses when I went from five point three to four point four million. I was shocked, but, um, you know, as I saw what she's trying to do, then, you know. So like I said, I'd recommend writing letters, you know, all that stuff's going to matter. It's a big deal.
It's, it's worth noting, if you look at the rest of the budget from the governor, there's a lot of program expansion that is being proposed, not in here in education, in other programs. Ultimately, that agenda has to get balanced out somehow, and they're going to poke at every part of the budget to see what's vulnerable. Where are there not interests defending that, those budget line items? So our job is to defend our line items in the budget. I, I think Fred Faster is probably better, if we're going to make a response.
Yep. I, I, I think faster and bigger. So the email that I sent to Sal, well, basically the question to just check the legal aspects about working with other school boards in the county or in the Questar region. I think that if we can send a powerful statement aligning all of the schools, then that's a bigger bat.
Who are you thinking of targeting?
I mean, I'd think I would start with all the school board presidents at this point, see if they would be on board with.
No, I mean, is, who you write, like, if we're going to make a statement, who's it directed to? An open letter?
Oh, I think that it's an open letter. It goes to the governor's office, but also speaks to the legislators as well.
Yeah, I think the legislators should be primary targets. They're going to be the ones actually fighting.
Yeah, they are. And the governor's not in an election year. So, so we're going to have, if we're going to find ground on this, it's going to be through the legislation, but I don't, I want to bring them on as, as allies. So the letter, at least the tone ally of the letter that I'm thinking would go to the governor.
I, I think what they want to tell us is that our lineup, what we should be telling the legislators is, you need to defend our line item in the budget.
That's exactly.
Yeah.
The superintendents, the business officials are meeting Friday at Questar. Some of that, some of that effort is, is coordinated through Questar as well. The Questar superintendent, about six months ago, approved Questar to work with Him and Instrab, a very strong lobbyist group out of Albany who works with the Capitol Region BOCs and WISHY BOCs in trying to advance education items with the legislators. As we know, this is all kind of all of a, a dance, if you will. Carl Hastings, certainly speaker, is one of the contacts that we would want to bombard with information. So I'll keep you posted as to some of the other efforts in terms of lobbying legislators that, that's being coordinated through Questar. The other, the other obvious would be the professional organizations like NISBA and NISCUS. They're all over their advocacy in terms of meeting with their legislators as well. So it's going to take a concerted effort on everyone's behalf. I don't think we're going to end up where we are today, but if we don't push hard, it may not be as favorable as we'd like. So certainly give the message.
The big concern I have is that when you ask such a big thing, and your, your compromise becomes half of that, that's still an enormous number.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't see this as a, as a negotiation where they want to compromise. I, I, I think they're poking fingers at, at weak constituents and to see who's not going to defend their line items. And but, so question, and maybe this is for legal. Is our discretionary board budget available or be directed at a suitable association that might be able to work this agenda?
I, I bet I'd have to check. I don't have a, an answer for you on that one. That one, I would definitely want to make sure that we proceeded very cautiously.
But it, it, and it runs into the question that I asked Dr. Cruz. You know, I think that the, the BOCs, which are the voice of the, the state education department in the field, but also the method by which we can communicate with state education department or coordinate processes together. You know, this is timely, and I, I don't think that there's, there's a lot of data coming in that is different than, than the trend data we've been watching. It's in line with the trends, but it's drastically more extreme. And I, I think that the BOCs need to take the lead on, on getting us some information about what we're supposed to be looking forward to. Without that, we're guessing or working against each other.
So just a couple of other quick items and to round out my report. We received some very favorable news this week from Chatham Kids Club. They finally got approved for a preschool program. We've been waiting since September for that process to take place. And so in, in short order, they'll be able to offer our preschool parents a wraparound program like they do for K-five students. That's, I know there are several parents who were still very interested in that. So that, that's very favorable news. And last but not least, I want to just give you a quick update. You know, one of the other priorities that we have as a district is to hire a new high school principal. We, I wanted to just let you know that we remain on target on our schedule. Last Thursday or Friday, we launched a survey internally to students and staff. I'm pleased that we have already about fifty-five, sixty responses. About equally split between staff and students. So that data is coming in. It's qualitative data and, you know, there's, I can already see some trends in some of the responses in terms of what, what is, what people are identifying as strong leadership skills in, in our next principal. We have a draft of the posting as we had anticipated. That will go out next Thursday, February first. And we'll have that posting. At this point, we anticipate leaving that open for thirty days to the end of February, and it's a leap year. So that's the twenty-ninth. And, and then we'll kind of follow through on our, our plan from there. We have done some research in terms of, I, we certainly want this to be a, a process where we encourage stakeholder input. But we've done some research based on professional standards and what schools and research show successful leaders have as far as dispositions and, and attributes. And, you know, we're beginning to start to build that leadership profile, which will be informed by the qualities and characteristics that are identified in our surveys. And I think I sent you a copy of this, but basically that's just a snapshot of what the survey looked like. Next on the agenda, probably about a week or two, will be to expand this survey to include stakeholders, parents and some community members. So that's, that's what we have to look forward to. And I think that rounds out my report for tonight.
Thanks, Sal. So when do we think we'll be getting that out to the larger community?
Probably about today, end of next week, probably about the same time we're sending out the posting for the job.
Okay.
I, I have a question. When you make those posts to those different employment venues, is it the same job description that goes out everywhere?
No, I, I, I've never seen that as being very productive. You know, the one that gets posted to OLS is a pretty standard high school principal posting with a little bit of uniqueness for Chatham. I think we need to get a little more creative when it goes on sites like Indeed and other places. In, in terms of perhaps identifying some of the more unique characteristics that we're looking for.
Did I miss that on my email, the timeframe for that, or have you sent that out to us?
I can, I'll resend it to you. That, that was on a presentation that we had done maybe three, four weeks ago. But maybe, oh, it was at the December meeting, I think we shared that. But I'll get you a copy of it.
Just that, yeah, I'd like that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're at board comment. I know that some have some ideas that they'd like to share about football, but are their comments from the board not related to football? Are there comments from the board related to football?
Yeah, plenty.
Okay, you want to start?
So Fred, I, I couldn't make it last week, and I'm, I'm curious if you have anything that's, that's useful to share.
Hudson meeting?
Yeah, observations.
So I sent out, I did send out notes to all the board members. Yeah, there was some interesting observations. I thought the presentation that Hudson put together was really nice. It had good numbers in it. Listening to the community, I heard some things that I thought were really promising. I heard some things that I, I found slightly alarming. There was some discussion in their own home around, around the game two years ago. They talked a lot about that. Ownership was not placed nor necessarily taken, just in acknowledgement that it did happen and would raise, raise some concerns, some considerations. There was strong opinions about who should coach and what uniforms should be worn, which I thought was interesting because in the two hours or two and a half hours that we spoke, I heard none of that in Chatham. There were other things to.
Sounds like a really different list of considerations.
It really was a different list of considerations, honestly. I think I took some notes here, so. Let me just a second to. So there were some things, it, it, the numbers that, that the AD at Hudson pulled out said that, you know, if we combined, it would allow for a JV opportunity. That's something that we didn't discuss. There was a comment about how many coaches, which I don't know that we've discussed. You know, one parent said, and this is a quote that I caught, was, I'm, I'm pretty partial to our coaching staff. Who's going to decide on that? Again, something we haven't discussed. And some of the logistics, whereas I think we held back on some of the logistical conversations because we didn't know, they got a little speculative. They, one parent had asked how Chatham felt about the fight, and then called out Hudson parents to step up. That is not my words. One parent said, and this is a quote, if they had enough students in the future, could we cancel this or quit it? The AD, to his credit, said, he said, I would have a hard time operating like that, operating like that. So I, I think that what I got from the Hudson meeting, Matt, honestly, is essentially it was the same stuff that we talked about, but I got a dispositional feeling about it. And, you know, whereas we had some, you know, we had a parent who brought up concerns about that what if we helped them out now and they dropped us later? That did come up in the conversation here. I think that it came up in the conversation there, but instead, there are, they would have different footing than we would have. We would be, we would be on the weaker foot with that arrangement. Because it's our modified and their varsity. Their modified is big enough to grow into their varsity. And that was, that was definitely referenced by more than one parent there. So I, I have some thoughts, but I hold back a little bit.
Just responding to that, I, around the risk, the programmatic risk, even if it's not a substantial contractual, like claw, I think asking for some shared commitment around decision-making would be something we could ask for from another district and that could be part of a deal.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think that that would have to be part of a consideration. What we're ultimately going to run into, folks, and I imagine several of you are here for football at this point, is that we have, we're facing, we are facing a decision in the next seven days. Before we're and that is not a great amount of time to do a negotiation. So I guess, I mean, I'll, I didn't, I was going to try and let everybody else speak first.
No, I, I, I have some other things to quote. So I, one other thing is, we, we've spent a lot of time discussing what if a merger. We haven't spent a lot of time talking about what if not a merger. And there's been some talk about programmatic risk and sustainability. When I look at the numbers, the impression I am left with is we're looking at the end of the football program. If we don't do something, but I'm not sure that that's the conclusion I should be coming to.
So so Sal and I had this conversation. You know, a couple of five or six weeks ago, when this first was posed to the to the board. I look at the data that that Dr. Cruz and Questar Boses brought in. And I look at this
Right.
This simple number here on on the on the on the first, and and we're looking at this is an enrollment, basically an enrollment calculation. And in twenty twenty one, this thing, this thing bends like it's fallen off the table. And so I I asked the question tonight about and and homeschool seems like an easy grab, you know, fourteen hundred homeschool students is a lot. It doesn't answer the question. It it answers a factor of the question that maybe those students who are not here are homeschooled. But then the question becomes why? It becomes where the motivation for that homeschool comes. And it becomes really a question about how are how is education? How is how is our community? Not just the Chatham community, because I think we need to look at this one in a bigger sense. The Columbia, Rensselaer and Green County communities, those schools and then the schools, you know, that compete against each other. What are? How do we solve this problem? I saw, full disclosure, I'm a public educator. I my kids raised public education and they all did well, or in the process of doing fairly well, at least. They're kids, so somebody knock on wood for me, please, because you never know. But I still believe that education, public education is it really is the great equalizer. It offers an understanding of what how democracy should work. It understand it it offers the ability to provide workforce and social mobility. And devoid of of a a standard for equity and equality. I am terrified about what would happen to this nation. That's big picture, but I'm really terrified what's going to happen to our community. And so I think that I, you know, I hope that what what Gladys is taking away with her from my question today is I need the bosies all over the state to find out through task force and direct action, why we aren't. Is it COVID fear? If it's COVID fear, I mean, how do we answer that? If it's not, then what is it? And and how does that speak to what we invest our money into long term, especially facing a potential budget cliff? And and I think that there's a lot that that this school district on its own cannot get to before we start to answer those big questions. But but at the end of the day, I would say, what's the product we're offering and why isn't it appealing? And if it's New York State taxes, then you know, I don't know what to say about that. But if it's public education, then we need to find out. And if it's sports involvement, we need to find out. If it's, you know, if it's something that I don't, you know, I'm not coming up with right now, then we need the Board of Cooperative Educational Services to dig in deep and find out. And I feel like they're lagging.
So when when I look at our when I look at our primary ed numbers, our primary ed enrollment, if we just beam them into secondary ed, it looks like holding the team together would be a long shot. So that's what when I'm looking at the numbers, like I'm just fast forwarding six years, I'm looking at the numbers and I'm thinking, well, if we lost a couple of kids a grade, that's the end. That's the end of that program, right? That's basically what we're looking at because I that's what I see, and I don't know if I'm looking at the numbers wrong.
I mean, I I'm not a I don't have a crystal ball, and I mean numerically, yeah.
Yeah, it could be. It could be the kids that that it could be the kids in our primary ed are going to participate at a higher rate than the secondary ed kids are now. But I that doesn't seem like a reasonable function.
If you look at it, I would argue, I you know, and not again, I cannot make projections. It's not I'm not I'm not in a role or desirous of the role to make these sorts of predictions. I think that that can be very dangerous and possibly detrimental to to planning, but a kid that's in the elementary school now, unlike a kid who was in fourth grade and is now in eighth grade. They never experienced remote learning. They did not have a social interruption, you know, and hopefully they never will. And that may bring back the passion for participation. I can't say, but I can't rule that out either. And so I hate the idea of projecting because I don't I've said this since I've been on the board. I do not think that the state or the federal government has done enough of a review about what COVID did to education for students, not just the academic, but also the participatory, to truly understand what we are looking at as a core problem.
Well, what I'm looking at is our enrollment report, and I see I'm staring at it right now for first, first, second, third grade, fourth grade, first, second, third, fourth, fifty six, sixty one, fifty, fifty two. When we look at ninth grade through twelfth, it's sixty nine, ninety five, seventy, seventy one. It's like a twenty percent drop right there.
Right. Our enrollment is down. We know that. What that means, I would argue, is something that has to still it should it should be under deep investigation.
I I totally agree. So I'm just from the perspective of what happens to the football program. I'm just trying to do a best best educated guess. Yes, to everything you said, but what I'm looking at is it does not look sustainable. And I does anyone else have an opinion on that? Because I think that's the conversation we should be having is not to merge with Hudson or not. It's do we want a football program or not?
Well, I I think it's a question that should be asked, but it's it also is potentially a question that should be answered in some sort of phasing of shift of change, meaning whether it's a shift now and then a shift in six years, five years, four years. You know, maybe maybe the the approach is to address the current state of.
You're totally right, except we have an offer right now for a merger, and I'm not there's not like a there's not a pool of mergers to drop randomly any year we want.
So it's it sounds if and I want to understand your question. It it sounds to me like and and at the at the presentation that we did here at the school, Marion and I were at our presentation. One of the community members asked the question, is this essentially, I'm paraphrasing, is this what the kids will want to do? Is football the thing that the next generation of kids want to do?
Yeah, and I don't I don't.
Or are we forcing them to do it because we we are used to it? And and I don't know the answer to that. I think it's a really interesting question. Oh, in seven days, I'm not going to have an answer for that question.
I I feel really strongly, just looking at the data, that if we don't do something this year. First of all, I'm not a football fan, okay, but I am a fan of kids working together in teams and being excited about being in teams and working together to achieve something, and that's super important. And they're excited about football. Some of them are really excited, and that's amazing. And it seems to me having any type of holding together a team that would qualify to participate in in regional sports does not look sustainable. And are we willing to just let the program phase out as interest wanes? And yeah, we could find other things for these kids to get get, you know, to cheer around. I'm sure we can figure that out and.
Again, I think that there's a level of prediction in 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 your postulate. So it it if you just look at the numbers, then a lot of things are going to fade out. A lot of things are phased.
Yeah.
But if you take the humanistic qualitative approach, maybe not. And we can't really know that. I was in the car the other day and Johnny Cash and June Carter came on and they were singing Jackson. We got married in a fever. And then they leave, they're broke. It's although I'm not into I I and I'm going to say this, I guess this is my statement. I I don't like to do anything in a fever. I like to do things with as much rational process as possible. So I guess I'm, you know,
Right, so.
I think I'm hearing you say that that you would support a merger at this time because of predictions.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm trying to hear from the the rest of the board that's here.
Yeah, me too.
If 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 they believe that you know, at the data I just gave, what do you guys think is going to happen? Because
I I don't think that's a fair question.
But I'm asking them.
Okay, but.
What what's your gut instinct? Because that's all we have to go on, our gut instincts here and and community feedback and it's mixed, so.
I will go. I've been thinking about this a lot, and football is very important to me. Both of my sons play. So this is a very near and dear thing that I'm I'm talking about here. So my thoughts, I wrote them down just to try and keep them in order. I think that we need to not rush into this. I think at the end of the day, if we do that, we are going to regret it because the football program it's it's a complicated thing to put this together. So I'm going to read what I wrote. So after considerable thought, I've arrived at the conclusion that merging the football program with Hudson this upcoming season is too soon. We have a little time. We should take it. The varsity team is sound. In my opinion, the right thing to do for Chatham School is not merging for this season, but with the expectation of merging the following season. In that time, we should build a relationship, work out the details that both schools are concerned about, coaching, uniforms, travel for practice. These are significant things. Give the players time and interaction to get used to the idea and make it work or not. I am not convinced that the overall program will be successful if we do not take the time to build a foundation. We really have one shot at this to get it right. Rushing this through and trying to make it work in my mind will only cause chaos and stress for everyone. I am aware that this means that ten fifteen modified level players may not get an opportunity to play in a school uniform this upcoming season. It is unfortunate, and I would be sorry to see that happen. Representatives from the Wildcats, Pop Warner, were at the meeting, and they are willing to step up to help in this area. It's not perfect, but it's an avenue for the players to play and learn and to prepare for the following season. It will also give the school a better assessment of actual players' interest. My decision is an attempt to strike a balance between the needs of the upperclassmen and the modified players. It is too soon for next year's seniors. The juniors and sophomores have time to work with the new program and adapt, and the modified and possible junior varsity would definitely have time to make it work. So in conclusion, I would vote to postpone the merger, gather more information and build towards a potential merger in twenty twenty five.
I I think it would benefit everyone if we can maybe talk about the seven day cliff.
And so I I don't have the slides on that, Sal, but we have to submit. If we were to look at a merger, it is before February first, if I'm correct, right?
Right, we would have to file preliminary paperwork with section two.
Right, so the preliminary.
About February first.
And if I understand it correctly, we could back out of that deal. However, if we backed out of that deal, you could look at programmatic collapse for both systems. Because if we lean against each other for it, and then we can't or won't. And also, my concern about that, that is, we could do that. We could take that step right now. And but if we pulled out because of new findings or or thoughts or community concerns or what, any number of variables, then what happens is we've left we've left that bride at the altar and and they're not going to merge with us because of that ever if we wanted to. So I don't want to burn that bridge myself.
It it's interesting because, you know, your your account of of what you heard at that meeting, I would say, just what you, you know, what you wrote about and what you talked about. I wouldn't say it's wholly positive, you know, it sounded.
And I I don't know that there I did not get a sense that their community was like, yeah, we are doing this. I think that there was some thoughts and some, you know, they're having kind of the same conversation we are. You know, they know it's important. We want to do what's best for kids. But but what that means, you you know, it what that means, there's a lot of questions.
Well, one of the question, you know, that I've thought about is, you know, what does this mean for other sports? You know, like, we're talking about football, but this could this would likely have a cascading effect into.
Probably you have to football, you have to suit up X number of students, where basketball is a lot less.
That's great. And
And I don't know about soccer, but we we had that figure on how many we have to suit up for for the football, and I don't know what it was.
I think it's sixteen at modified level and thirty six, thirty five, twenty, less than twenty one. Okay, twenty one at the varsity level. To to go to your point, though, Chris, you're right. I I mean, I worked with I worked at Berlin during their merger. And it began with swimming, and swimming went for eight or ten years, and then it went to soccer. And within a year, it was all sports. So those are things I think that that's why, you know, seven days. It's one thing to solve this issue. How many other issues do we set up by solving this?
Right.
It's not impressive. I mean, this is a very specific.
At this point, right.
Muriel. And do we know what other school districts and are they their their enrollment certainly is going down? Also, the other school districts that play football, are they having this problem or have we or don't we know that?
Well, that's one of the reasons that I I want to quest our to I want Questar to start digging into that because that is a question. I mean, it was great that they brought us the numbers of the mergers. That's not the question. That's not how I intended that question that I submitted to them. The question was, can you find out for us? You know, a little bit more data.
But I think the other aspect, and not to intervene because this is a board conversation, but the the other aspect of the discussion is there are geographic limitations to these conversations, right?
Yes.
So as you as you can look for other examples, and there's some great examples in the greater capital region of where mergers have been successful. And some of them were actually reiterated tonight on the Questar slide, and we've got the mechanic bill of Huzick Falls or yeah, Huzick Falls mergers. Those are very successful mergers.
Right.
When we looked and examined who would be practical partners in in the region, as as much as everyone is experiencing some sort of enrollment decline, their programs are in different states of viability. So for instance, you know, a Rensselaer district who doesn't currently have football, who might be interested in a merger, it wants to be careful because they don't want to cannibal cannibalize potentially their soccer or a lacrosse program. The other districts that are in close proximity to us, as you know, we've had conversations with them. They're just not at that critical juncture as you could argue Chatham and more so Hudson are that that are feeling the urgency of that. So, you know, everything is going to change from tomorrow to next year to the year after, and conversations will will vary based on where people are and and their assessment of their viability and their desire to maintain programming. I will tell you that I've been in contact several times with the Hudson superintendent, as I've reported to you. And their board is having a conversation very similar to this tonight. And as you know, likely if we don't merge with them, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, they're in a little different spot. They will not have a varsity program for next year, right? So their their decision making criteria is slightly different than ours as well.
Okay.
You know, I my feeling is, I mean, it's it's I feel like we're and it's not this is not a perfect world, right? So we don't have all the information ideally that we would hopefully want to have. It's a big decision. And so I'm I'm going in two different directions. One is, you know, looking long term. What would do we is it even viable long term, you know, even if we do decide to merge? And it's a good question, and you can't, we don't know the answer, but we can look at the trends and see what's coming. So 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 I think I think that's something to talk about. And I also think, you know, if we look at the other side, well, what are the what are the negatives emerging? And what's what's the what's wrong? Like, if we merge at this time, there's a lot of questions as to how it works, but what are ultimately? What do we get out of it versus what 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 doesn't work about it? And to me, what it gives us is the ability for our programs to stay healthy in that way and continue. And so I, you know, I I like the idea of supporting sports and so can do what we can.
So one of the things that came up, I think, at ours, but definitely at Hudson's, was the idea of transporting kids. And football is a sport that goes into, you know, some cold weather and potentially some treacherous road conditions. I think everybody but Buffalo plays in the snow. So while I while I I do not think, I think there's predictive modeling, but I don't think that it's just based on numbers of of future students. By just going off of those, I mean, you know, there's tragedies that could occur. You know, and and You know, and and those are as viable in the future based on just simply enrollment numbers as everything else would be. And that's what I'm saying, like my feeling, and I'm going to say that, you know, I I I agree with Mary Ann. I I I'm empathic uh to the Hudson kids. There's a couple of seniors, I think there was two there, that would not get a senior year a- a- and I feel for those kids. Um, but my responsibility on this, in this role is to protect Chatham's program. And at this point, I don't feel like I know enough to safely say that I am doing that by pursuing a merger at this time.
I have a couple of questions. I forget that I couldn't make the meeting, but I had a procedure done that said that I didn't allow me to drive that evening. Um, number one, do we have a, I know that it would put our, we were to wait, not do it for a year, we waited a year. Would, is it, are there a possibility that the kids that are modified that would have been, are any of them going to be able to pass the physical fitness test and be on our JV?
So we don't have a JV because we don't have the numbers.
We don't have JV.
No, we got modified and varsity.
Right. We don't have enough for.
We don't have enough for nine, a modified nine, which means seven, eight, nine. And a, you know, our varsity team is staffed, but but what you'd be talking about a seven, eight with a minimum of of sixteen players. And then nine and ten with a minimum of probably twenty one players. And then eleven and twelve with a minimum of twenty one players. And so, you know, while I think, and who knows, if we could do a a traditional modified JV varsity, maybe more kids would get interested. I mean, you're looking at a seventh grader at a hundred and eight pounds and a ninth grader at a hundred and thirty two pounds. Um, and all the swagger that comes with being in ninth grade over a seventh grader, there may be an intimidation factor. There may also be an intimidation factor if you're a, you know, a hundred and thirty pound sophomore going up against a two hundred and twenty five pound lineman. Um, and and who's a senior, you know, there's so, these are all factors. And this is why, Matt, I I'm I'm hesitant to be predictive strictly on enrollment data. Because there's a sentiment of this, there's a mindset that comes with this that we, I feel, have to explore. Um, you know, we've heard from sixty I mean, sixty two families um on the survey. You know, I I would like to hear from three hundred. Um, I would like for us to take that time. I I'm concerned that a solution at this point isn't, is temporary and might be further detrimental to harvesting a desire uh of engagement.
Can I ask for some clarity around options? Is it, I I hear this described as if it's all or nothing. Aren't they separate teams, the modified and the varsity?
Yeah, the problem is that we we need modified and they need varsity. So it, you know, the negotiation begins with what they need and what we need not being the same thing.
Okay, I I I don't have a lot of appetite for a conversation about an emergency fix for next year. I do have appetite for the conversation of where are we going to be in five years? And we just have to do the best thing we can for that.
Agreed, agreed.
Be an emergency fix, it'll be the same thing we're looking at right now, just putting.
No, no, I think he's saying you decide this now to go into next year.
If 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 it's the right move this week because it's the right move five years from now is different than because there's a deadline about next year and whether we're going to be able to play next year, like it's it's a totally different consideration.
That's exactly where my head is at. And so you and I are now on the same page because it's, when I say that I feel this is right, like there's a lot of questions.
But but just to be.
The urgency is this week for next year.
So so the urgency is about next year. That's what we're.
Next season.
Next season.
Coming September.
Right, yeah. Let me ask a follow up then. They don't have enough varsity kids.
Right.
But would their, if they don't merge, I presume they're not dating another school district this week?
They have ample modified players.
Right. So here's the question. Do they plan to run the modified team next year if they have enough players?
They do.
So it sounds like there's no urgency at all, actually.
Well, the urgency for their varsity players, I think, is real. I I mean, if you're, if you're, you know, like I said, I I I'm an educator. I feel for these kids. There's, I know that there was two kids, I don't know how many we're talking about in all, but two kids on that team that my heart broke for them because they are gonna be seniors and they want to play. One of the, one of the things that frustrates me about this process, again, and I want to see the advocacy from the Bozies in the field. We we talked about a lend, like a loaning student, a loaning player program. You can't do that in New York State and and I want to hear a logical reason from from them why. Why cannot we do that in New York State? You know, like, and if that's a change that that if if a state agency can investigate and find that that's a viable option, then that's a better choice than a merger for many, many schools.
Well, it's it's not going to be an option for next year, but.
No, I mean, not in seven days, exactly.
Um, I, I I don't hear anyone in this group that thinks, um, I I heard, I heard I heard something really important that I did not know um in the last few weeks, which is that they're not shutting down their football program if they can't field enough varsity players next year. And the distinction is there's a couple of kids they won't be able to play and that's unfortunate.
Right, well, and they could do, they could, they could drop to a JV, I think they could drop to, I don't, I mean, I don't want to do their numbers for them. Um, but no, they would, I believe that they would run a modified. Uh, they would probably not have a varsity. That being said, they have not had a successful varsity season for now two years in a row. And so while I feel for the kids that spoke about their senior year, they, without ever having had this discussion, may be in exactly the same situation next year anyway. They can't finish the season, they can't finish the season.
Uh, well, I I feel great about inviting Hudson to participate in a study about a next year plan and and, you know, extending that from our board to theirs.
Yeah, I think that that's would be appropriate myself, but.
I I would like to take this um subject up after our football. If we stay like we are and and field our own varsity team this coming year, I would like to open this discussion up again, after the football season is over this year.
I would not want to wait. The football is a fall sport. I would want to start this conversation as early, well, I, listen, uh, Sal just presented the the last part of the superintendent's report. You know, I I I love the sport. I played, I I've had a son that that was a very successful football player here. The biggest obligation that this board has after finance is leadership. And we have spent the last five weeks talking about football. We are losing a thirty year leader in the flagship of this district. Our focus needs to be on replacing the principal because at that point in time, we have a leadership. And and so we got to learn to walk and chew gum, but we start the process of principal hiring. And as soon as we have that process to a point where where we're probably in the interview phase, I think that that's when we start to engage in a conversation with Hudson. So maybe March or April um to really start this so that we're going into next season. So we have a, I I'd like, I'd like, you know, eleven, ten months of conversation to really find this out.
I agree with everything. I agree with what you're saying, but I also think um April sounds a little late.
And and maybe, Chris, maybe. I I I don't want us to get, I don't want us to trip over our laces.
Yeah.
Because again, I think that hiring the high school principal at this point, si- since John announced his retirement, that has been the number one most important issue on this board's agenda after the, you know, after budget.
Yeah.
And and I think that would give us time to iron because I'm hearing some things that you said from the Hudson meeting that concern me, you know, it seems they want their, yeah, tho- those sorts of things we need time to talk about and talk through and compromise on.
And hopefully hear from more of the community, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. Love to hear from more of our community. But but yeah, Pat, I mean, I I I think that that's something, you know, like engaging Hudson in the conversation. That seems like the appropriate process if we're looking at this long term and and right now we're just grabbing jerseys and tugging back and forth. And that doesn't feel right to me.
It sounds like we can probably move on. I I think what I heard from everyone is um it it's not a no, but it's it's a no this year. And and we should be, if that's how we all feel, we should just move on.
Really do need to plan for the following year. Part of the problem is there wasn't enough time to map out these. It was just too quick.
I I hear it.
More time and our community is very passionate, very passionate. We are a very community organized. So to have something attack our identity, so to speak, or just alter it is, people are very passionate about it and that was reflected in those surveys that we had gotten. There is a, I want to say a fifty fifty split from, would that be an accurate assessment?
Uh, more.
I'm sitting here, I I see a lot of people in the audience and I'm sure when we had the second comment, there's going to be a lot of I I would almost wonder, could we change the agenda and let them?
So that's, we're we're going to get there fast. Well, we just need to move on.
Yeah, it will be, we do have, so folks who want to hang out, there is a second public comment at the end of this meeting. I apologize in advance. I will have to excuse myself at seven twenty five. Um, but Ms. Pira will be uh.
Let's do it now.
Well, what I would propose is uh that that we all agree to communicate something to Hudson immediately about this because it sounds like that's where we're at.
Absolutely. But um, but so let let's, um, I think because we're only at consensus agenda. Uh, we don't have anything huge coming up right here, Sal. All right, so um I'm going to move this conversation forward in the hopes of giving the the community an opportunity to speak on the agenda. Um, okay, uh, policy committee.
We're just introducing the um workplace violence prevention policy that became signed into law January third. Um, we're having our first reading. We don't actually read the policy, do we? Okay, all right. So we just uh have to have the opportunity for everybody to read it. It will need to be um voted on next.
Yeah, next.
Yeah, we'll we'll plan to have a second reading and an approval on the thirteenth. It puts us close to the deadline. Um, these policy, the policy statement was supposed to be in place um by the first part of February, so we're we're not too bad.
It's thirty days from February seventh. I just looked it up.
Okay, uh, anything else on policy?
We're having a meeting tomorrow.
Okay, uh, facilities. I I think it's easy to say that our.
We covered that already.
Upgrade on Facilities Net last week. It was pretty much the the folks that were here tonight and that concludes the Facilities Report. Thank you. Uh, we do have a policy.
You guys are doing a great job.
Policy first reading, um, these sixty five seventy workplace violence prevention first reading. Any questions on this uh policy?
Uh, comments, but no objections. Um, one is, um, I see we put Mike's name right in the policy. Um, I'm not aware of any other policies where.
I think it should be a title.
Yeah, I think so too. Um, or that, or that the board will point someone. I don't know that it needs to be in the policy.
Yeah.
Um, and the second thing is, although the policy is fine as written, um, we just removed a giant or we're planning to remove. We're in the process of removing a giant pile of policies or shortening a giant pile of policies that restate law. And I just read the law. It's about the same length of this policy. It seems like everything after the first page is just like copied out of law. Maybe we don't need it, but the content looks fine, other than that.
Okay, I know one of the other members of the Policy Committee did want to expand it so that it was beyond just the employees and that would cover anybody on campus. Um, that's a, I think that there may be overlaps. Um, the word client is used and I think that that refers to students. And I wonder if that's not covered by the code of conduct. So in policy, maybe this is something we can discuss a little bit tomorrow.
Okay, we just took NISBA's version. We use uh New York State School Board Association uh for their policies. And since they had like a cookie cutter policy that they have lawyers, so they know they can dot the i's and cross the d's. So we were like, we're just going to go with what they're saying. This is going to be um just one of those things that we just have to just have on file. So that's why we really didn't uh spend a lot of time on it because it just restates the law.
It it doesn't need more more time. You're right. Uh, but but I would like to get Mike's name out of it.
Yeah.
Mike would like to get Mike's.
Tag, you're it. Uh, all right, motion to accept the consensus consensus agenda J through L.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, any questions?
Uh, I I'm not sure if tonight's tonight, but we at some point need to talk about K one and what the plan's going to be. Um, so Sal, I don't know if you have any observations tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't know what K one was.
Not in their first grade, yeah.
K one V's, I I was like, I didn't know, I didn't know what you meant. Um, what K one is. Pedro. Oh, got it.
Now, yeah, now it's in public, so I I don't know if you've got anything to.
We don't. Um, the team is uh someone's been ill on the team and hasn't been um in the last few days. So once we get the team back together, coming days, we're going to be brainstorming ideas. We do already have some. Just quickly, now that it's public, um, I'd just like to acknowledge that Kate has done a phenomenal job by this district. Um, and I wish her best. I think we all wish her best in her future endeavors.
Yeah, I'd second that.
She's going to a school district that's thirty times the size of ours. And really far away and cold. Kate, it's cold. All right, uh, that brings us to future agenda items. Oh, did I vote on that? Did we do?
I was.
Did we vote?
No, do it all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Items for future agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to bring up at this time?
Uh, maybe just reiterate, you know, in terms of the issue of what we were just discussing. Um, maybe we want to hold it on the agenda.
I can agree with that.
Yeah.
Little bit different fashion, more of an investigative.
Right, that the other thing I would say is um just be being the um being that I think time to response is probably one of the most important things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Fred, if you have a statement you'd like to issue, um, I don't think you need my approval. Um, so uh, just, no, no, not us, not not talking about football. The the budget.
Yeah.
Any kind of communication? I think all they need to hear is some communication.
For sure.
I don't think it even matters what the letter says. I think they need volume.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Uh, okay, we are at second public comment. Would anybody like to, from the public like to speak? This is on anything we've talked about within the agenda today. Yeah, twenty eight. And and again, I have to leave at seven twenty five, so.
I'm going to keep it short.
Sweet.
All right. Okay, so my name's Kami Nina. I'm the current sitting president of the Northern Columbia County Pop Warner Football and Cheer Team. Um, and I would like to say I'm in support of the decision to to not make a hasty decision on merging with the um Hudson team. Um, my decision is based on a couple of factors. One, I realize that in looking at our numbers currently for the participants of our team, we have right now, majority of our team comes from Ichabod. So if we ended up finding our situation in a couple of years where we couldn't field the teams, we don't know if Ichabod would be in that same position at that time, but if we were, I feel that maybe they would be a better suited team for us to merge with. I feel like uh I, my kids go to Ichabod. Um, I currently live in Ichabod, but I'm a Chatham uh graduate here, so um I feel like the two schools have similar values. Um, you know, we strive to have successful students. Um, we're big on academics. Um, I worry that uh Hudson, again, there's been several comments of in a couple of years, Hudson kind of ditching us and then that leaves us again in a situation of what do we do? I think if we work within our school district, we can build out the program. Um, I think there's a lot of um uh, what's the word? I think football sometimes still has a poor perspective and people are still scared of the sport um because it is a tackle, you know, a tackle sport, and I think parents are still nervous to allow their kids to play. Um, I was one of those parents. I can honestly say that my son Hunter, who's now ten, he played his second year of football and several years he asked me to play football and I was like, no, like, you're going to get hurt, you're too young, whatnot. And um, a couple of years ago, Hunter was diagnosed with Tourette's and I decided, you know what? He's gonna play football if that's what he wants to do. Um, why should I not allow him that opportunity? And I can tell you that football gave him an outlet and you would never know, looking at Hunter today, that he has that diagnosis. Um, he has good leadership, sportsmanship, um, and I just feel like. Um, he has good leadership, sportsmanship, um, and I just feel like, you know, football, it's a commodity, like, we become a team, a family, and I think if we can have a little bit of support from the school and starting to build it at a younger age, um, I think that could lead into some larger numbers, um, in the future.
Thank you.
So, thank you, guys.
So it's, it's not really our practice to respond to during board, board comment, but I, I want to be cautious. It was not an excessive number of comments from them saying that break this contract in two years when we no longer need them. A comment was made, I don't, I just want to be sure that as we're going into this, we're not being, you know, the, the message is not hyperbolic in any way. It, it, we can have a very reasonable conversation with, with Hudson, we can have a very reasonable conversation with Ichabod. I think that at this point, in those forums, you're hearing a lot of passion. Um, and so, so as reasonability, as we slow this process down and reasonability dictates, um, I think that, you know, that, that we would come to a cleaner language, should that be the case.
So I, I don't think it's necessarily off the table, but I think the school district itself has to show some changes and improvement on their end before we consider that merge.
Good evening, Chris Kelly. So we're District of Opportunities, we talk about Questar CTE programs, all that fun stuff. Why don't we have automotive here, why don't we have aviation here, why don't we have cosmetology here? Because it's easier to consolidate those, right? Bozie was founded seventy-five years ago, and that's Cooperative of Education Services, right? So we've been doing this for a long, long time, New York State has been pushing people out the door for a long, long time. Until the Lotto revenue and the cannabis revenue starts coming into education, it's going to continue to be that way. And we're going to continue to have to consolidate French, Spanish, wait, we don't even have French, do we? Do, okay, we don't, and that's the nature of what we're dealing with. So the fact that we're not prepared to make a, a decision on that is, is kind of scary, because we've got to make those decisions every day, they're going to continue on and on. Right? The declining enrollment and declining funding, it's going to continue, it, it's just the way it is. The, the nature of potentially merging with Ichabod, who's enrollment is stable, doesn't make a lot of I, I don't see them doing that personally, right? One of the safety issues, the concerns that you've got a hundred-pound seventh graders playing against a hundred and eighty potentially pound ninth graders. This opportunity with the merger would potentially have a modified JV and varsity program, allowing those kids to play at a safer level, learn the game, learn a little love for the sport, and play it as a safe level, alleviating the risk for moms and dads, you know, that have concerns about their kids playing the sport. By consolidating, we could potentially leave room or a stopgap measure to allow the Pop Warner programs to rebuild based on students that didn't have COVID lockdowns and are now more socially apt to get out and, and pursue a sport. Heard the, the reports that our students play athletics more than most other districts, had a higher percentage. I believe that, a hundred percent so. If we don't offer those, we're gonna have greater addiction to the old screen time. That's all we're gonna do, it, on that front. We talked about college career and life readiness, and that's the expectation of our graduates, right? If we've got questions or comments from the community, the school, the board, about is Hudson the right culture? To me, that's the hundred percent number one reason to do a merger on this program, right? Because if we can't figure out how to merge with the world that's one town down, then we've got an issue and we haven't prepared those kids for life. Right? The transportation side of things, we work that out all day, every day, with Questar programs, CTE programs, that side of things. You know, is it a home game here? Hey, the home game's here this Friday, we practice in Chatham this Friday. Next week, the home games in Hudson, we practice down there, and where they're, the logistics are not that hard to manage. I'm sure our A Ds at both districts have worked hard on that diligently to make sure that it's going to be as feasible as possible. Right? And lastly, from a community perspective, I look at what Hudson's doing, both athletically and with their student initiatives to improve what they're doing down there. I envy those programs, and I'd be all over being a part of them, right? From their athletic director, their students, their community, their engagement, I think it's a win-win for us.
Thanks, Chris.
Anyone else?
Do we have anyone online?
We still have twenty-four people online. If anybody online would like to make comment, you can hit your virtual hand there, and, uh, Dr. D'Angelo will, will, will bring you over. All right, so, um, I mean, I think that that perhaps encapsulates sort of the read that we've had on everything, it, it is that our data keeps coming in at fifty-fifty. Um, I had a pretty moving conversation with a couple of young men the night that we were here. Um, and about, and their players, and, and one of them said, you know, I play second string. And if we merge at this point in time, then I get third string. And like I said, Chris, my, my obligation is to these kids at this time, and I listen to kids, it's, I, 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 I listen to the community, but I'm an educator and I listen to the kids, and to hear a kid impassioned, nervous, concerned, um, I'm not gonna lie, that went heavy on my heart and, and in my head on this, I feel for the kids in Hudson as well. Yeah, but I, you know, I think we're still, even tonight, we're hearing a fifty-fifty. Good comments, good thoughts on both sides. And, and I, I don't, I'm uncomfortable personally, just like a little bit more information. Okay. All right, so, uh, are we going to execute this? All right, so, uh, at this time, the board, I need to emotionally do that, only because I, I want to make sure that I'm clear, because I, you know, I know they're meeting tonight. There's been some speculation that they might even gone, gone to a vote. Um, I just want to, I want to have a conversation with the superintendent tomorrow, because I don't, I, I certainly respect the board's position on this. But I want to know, I wanted to make sure I have the marching rights, uh, the marching orders in terms of what to communicate with them. Uh, and what I'm hearing is that, um, uh, we've made a decision here in Chatham that we're going to hold off. And that, um, that at least for this year, uh, we, we don't see a merger, uh, but we would, we certainly have the appetite to begin a process to sit down and see what the future holds. Is that, is that a Yeah, and I, I would say even, you know, eager to have, have this conversation.
I, I feel like, um, it might be, the superintendent's gonna hear that, but other people in their community are gonna hear it too. I think it would make sense to give them a why, and the biggest why I have heard is, um, that the timeline, which has been forty-five days, thirty days, something like that so far.
Yeah, something, with a holiday or two.
It is, was not enough time to get, to get community consensus, and we think that that, that needs to be part of it.
I would say that's absolutely where my head is at.
And we should tell them that, because I, I don't want them to hear their community to hear.
Right.
That we're
We're not interested, it's not a goal, we're saying, we're saying that, I mean, it's, it's, I think it is like forty days or something like that, since we heard this conversation initially, and that doesn't include, you know, the Hanukkah Christmas and New Year's place, you know, which made communication stagnant and stand still for a while. So, yeah, I agree with Matt on that, so. Okay, uh, motion to enter executive session.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming, folks.